Well, the work study session, the city council, the order. So there's this agenda packet on the online line, if you'd like to see that. Okay, let's start with the pledge. We have a visiting mayor with us. I wonder if he'd like to lead us in the pledge tonight?
I am.
The states of America. And the republic which stands one nation, a God, and a democracy, and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, thank you for helping us. We appreciate it.
Citizens Academy.
I know that, yeah. I went, I went, when I went down to speak, I offered to have him be the co- the co speaker.
He's a glutton for punishment. He's here again tonight. He's just got to have a two hour meeting and here he is again.
Okay, so this is a discussion of the operating and capital improvement budgets, information only. And we're going to turn it over to Ms. Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I apologize, I'm having technical difficulties and had to run and grab another laptop really fast. So I just need to get logged into Zoom so I can share my presentation.
Hey, so what would you like us to do in the meantime?
Sit and look at you.
Eat candy.
We can let the vice mayor finish his dinner.
Yes.
Well, I have, I have a not supported question for Councilwoman Page, just pulling the presentation up. Do you guys like to have a coffee machine here for council meetings? I know they're late night meetings, but would you like to have a coffee machine here? Any.
Only decaf?
How about a wine machine?
That'd be some.
Add it to the budget.
Right?
I'm fine with coffee, but I, I would, I don't really want to be caffeinated. If I'm gonna drink coffee.
You won't let it, I wouldn't want it.
Okay.
All right, same way.
And I'm not really needing it either. Coffee.
Yeah, I like coffee. I'd, and I would drink some.
I like Paul's idea better.
The lime, yeah.
Well, we're waiting. Joe could be here with us tonight, since this is a regular scheduled meeting. So we had, you have our alternate attorney here with us. This is Robert Wingo is currently here with us. So he has worked for the City of Surprise for several years, is currently very involved with Payson, and will be here with us tonight. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. You're filling big shoes.
Keeps us in line. Joe typically fills my shoes. He was the city attorney after I left Page to go to Surprise, so.
Let him know that.
I'll let him know.
Okay, I just got the Zoom link, so we should be up and running in just a second.
What happened to your other computer? You don't know?
It just wouldn't download the presentation. I started downloading it at five twenty-five and finally a quarter till, I thought I better go get a different computer.
So you're on your third computer now?
This is my old one and it's like the tried and true.
Is this your boy starting off for the budget, Sasha?
We need new computers. Actually, my new computer, I've had nothing but problems with.
Will you get a chance to look at the development of your amendment? Are you okay with it?
Thank you. Very good question. Can you talk about it, Dale?
We have talked about that meeting.
Wait till we get to that meeting?
Might as well just wait. I, I don't think she's gonna be too long.
No, it's, we got to go to, and they'll play, we're starting to open.
That was.
Exact language.
Actually, this is a negotiated, very successful position to play a lifetime. I haven't seen a show there yet. I'm a big music fan.
It's worth, it's worth, go try and do it though in the spring when it's not snowing. Hardcore. Coloradoans showed up and it was raining and sleeting and snowing. Sun came out and it repeated and did it all over. Below the stage.
So Bill's got his name in there?
All right.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Well, I apologize for that. Rocky start here. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we'll be going over the fiscal year twenty-six proposed budget. So just to quickly run through our agenda. For some reason, there's. And we'll start out looking at our year and projections for this current fiscal year. Then we'll look at our personnel budget or operating and our C I T. So starting with our revenue projections for fiscal year twenty-five. We're look, I'm projecting that we'll come in over budget about, by about nine hundred and fifty-three thousand or six percent over budget. And the majority of that is sales tax. I'm projecting will be about thirty-hundred and thirty-seven over and our interest earnings will be about seven hundred thousand over. I think these computers hate me. Okay. On the expenditure side, we budgeted thirteen point five million. And I project we'll come in at just under thirteen, so about five hundred and seventy-nine thousand under budget. Or at ninety-six percent. We will have a few contingency authority requests to move some contingency authority to city attorney. A hundred and fifty thousand, that's to help pay for the Calvack truck study. Public safety, thirty thousand for fire. That's because our final number comes in after we adopt our budget. And then court, sixty-six thousand to take care of the severance that we've agreed to with them. For rec and special events, just a reminder, rec has a cost recovery policy of fifty percent and special events has ninety percent. I think rec will come in at about fifty-two and a half and special events will be about ninety-four and a half. So to summarize, our fiscal year twenty-five, I estimate we'll have an ending fund balance of thirty point two million. We do reserve fifty percent of our operating expenses. We have to take that out. So that leaves twenty-three point eight, but we've already, we already have reserved or assigned eight million for Calvack and the library combined. And two point nine million for the Hilltop. So that leads us to our fiscal year twenty-six budget. So in order to prepare for that, we have to get, we have to project where we think we'll be at the end of twenty-five. So we start working on this in January. We, Matthew and I, we meet with all the departments, set our expectations. We go through all of their spending for the current year and prior years. And then that leads us to tonight, our work study session. We'll have the tentative budget ready for adoption at the regular May meeting. The final in June and then we'll do a quick special meeting in July for the tax rates for the special districts. So that leads us into our personnel budget. There are a few changes that are happening. The five percent health insurance increase, which is roughly forty thousand. ASRS is going down slightly, so a decrease of about eleven. One reduction in force of hundred and twenty-seven thousand, so total net changes of, or total changes of negative almost ninety-eight thousand. We do have a few recommendations for personnel. The first one being a three percent cost of living adjustment. That's based on CPI. We also pull all the other West Valley cities to see what they're doing. We're also recommending an up to two percent merit, just depending upon evaluation, so total combined five percent. The West Valley average is five point eight percent. Just to make sure, we want to stay, you know, competitive with our, our other West Valley cities. We do have a couple of staff changes that will be about fifteen thousand. And then two new full-time positions, which would be at a cost of two sixty. So net changes of three ninety-one. So before I move on, are there any questions or discussion?
Thank you, Paige. So you said the average, and we talked about this in our meeting, three percent plus the two is five. But average for the West Valley is five point eight, so we're offering less than average.
Five point eight or five point three?
Five point eight.
Eight.
What's, what's the average mean? What does that, what does that mean?
The average raise for the Valley city service, five point eight.
What's it?
The West Valley.
Which ones are the West Valley?
Eoria, Surprise, Goodyear, Buckeye, Lindale.
Avondale.
Avondale. Paulson.
So I would like to think that we. I, I hate being at the average or less in, in staffing and wages, at least allow the opportunity for merit. The increase above the two percent for people that have earned the ability to, that have superseded their, their actual work. Most people come into two percent, but people that have really gone out and done something, I think we should give them the opportunity to do more in a merit. To get us above the five point eight. I would, I would recommend that we have the ability to go up to seven.
Where do we fit in the West Valley in terms of our salaries? Where are we lower? I know we're lower than the bigger cities, but.
I would say generally speaking, and it really depends on position, I would say roughly seventy percent. We asked Lisa to join us tonight if there are. To help us with any salary or benefit questions, but do you agree about seventy?
See, that's my, my concern is we're starting lower and we know the cost of living is higher than three percent, isn't it, over the year?
I was right at about three, the CPI, when I checked it a couple of months ago.
The problem with the averages is it, it, it can be skewed in terms of your analysis because of the cities in it. Either are significantly larger, meaning their budgets are five hundred million dollars. And they have a significant number of more employees. And the jobs are different. Working for them is not the same as working for a small city, so. Our positions, I think, would fare a lot better if you were to compare it to, say, like Youngtown. Okay, we probably are above Youngtown in most, all of our, all of our positions. But it's, on the west side is the most comparable city to us in terms of size and budget. Probably a little less on budget, but size is almost the same. You could go to the same size city, go to Paulson though, and you're probably gonna see that we're under, we're, we're on the low side, less than what Paulson pays. Because Paulson's got an unusual situation with the amount of warehouses they have, property taxes they collect is, no, so their, you know, their budget, when you add in the, the full budget. Because they also own their own wastewater treatment and they have all their own police and fire, you know, their budget might be two hundred million. So even though they're same size of population, again, it's hard to compare them with us, so. Would, you know, I, I'm not opposed to seeing the three percent stay the same, but allow up to four percent merit. But I think it would be based, we'd have to take a look a, a little bit both on the merit of the employee and try to understand how do, you know. How do we rank maybe with Paradise Valley is what we, I talked about, you know, with city manager, because maybe it's more comparable to the jobs here. So we need, I think, you know, but for purposes of budget, it's, I mean, I don't see that as a problem in terms of budget, but. Before we start pulling the string on exactly how we're gonna do that, I, I think we just need to understand where we are with things that are really our peers. Mr. Vice Mayor.
Well, Ron, is, is what you were suggesting, add two percent to merit?
Potential merit. Not, not a guaranteed merit.
Okay, but you're not asking the cost of living to go up, you're asking for the merit to go up.
Correct. Strictly on.
Now, so Claire, sir, you, if I'm understanding correctly, you were suggesting a three percent colon, up, up to a possible four percent merit for a total of seven possible.
Giving you discretion to people that have earned it for the work that they've done and you're not capped.
Yes, sir. Per the evaluations.
Per the evaluation.
Yes, sir. Um, I can explain further if you'd like, as far as what the mayor was saying, as far as salary ranges. Um, so me and the mayor discussed this. I think a good example of that would be, would be mine. I'm being very open about this. So every year when we do my, when you guys do my evaluation process, we provide you guys a list of cities and we, what we do, the first thing we do is compare population cities around the state, they're about our size, and also valley cities. So of course, it's getting to be evaluation time for me, so I know pretty well what these numbers are. So if you look at the population cities on the state, we're seeing managers of our, about our population, I want to say it's a hundred and eight, a hundred eighty-three thousand is the average. But if you look at valley cities, it's two eighty-three. So obviously, there's a hundred thousand dollars difference there in population cities versus valley cities. As the mayor said, you know, your much bigger cities, we're very different. I don't think it's fair to compare me to the city manager of Buckeye or Goodyear or Avondale, because they have some, they have a thousand employees, I don't, right? They're very different. So certainly I shouldn't be on that end of it. So I think it's somewhere in between. I mean, exactly as the mayor said, I think that Paradise Valley is a much closer to example than where we are. Just as far as city by city, we don't have a property tax, state on property tax. We contract out police services. We're very similar in Paradise Valley and also with the kind of community that we are. I think that's a better example. So I think that's good to look at as far as valley cities and population cities. But I think it's a good thing. And if we are gonna look at putting more money at this, I, I do like the idea of doing it merit versus colonel. Because merit's a much better way to, to reward the better employees. It's incentive, if that's what we want to do.
Okay. On average in the past, so merit is a hundred percent, what, what is the average percentage that we give our employees across everybody here? So, you know. Are they, if it's two percent here, are we averaging out the employee gets one and a half percent or are we averaging out one point seven five percent? What I'm asking is, the quality of our staff.
Right.
You know, I would expect or I would hope that most people would achieve, you know, high merit raises.
Yes, sir.
So what is the fraction, you know? So if we go to four, is everybody gonna get four? And then, you know, okay.
They won't, no, sir, they won't all get four. Mo- most of them will, but they won't all. So I evaluate department heads and department heads evaluate their own employees. We could certainly give you numbers as far as last year, what the breakdown was. Top of my head, I couldn't tell you, but no, sir, they won't all get fours. Because not all employees are rock stars. Some are, but some aren't.
That'll be clear. Each point is worth about how many dollars? Total budget dollars?
Eighty, eighty-four thousand.
Each point is worth forty, no less than forty-two thousand dollars. About forty-two.
So if, if you use three quarters of it, you're talking about a sixty thousand dollar budget bump.
Yeah, it's not, it's not.
Not untenable, it's given the answer reward, but could provide, people we want to keep and not lose them for something silly.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Looking at our.
Going to change?
Sorry.
Yeah, so I was just wondering.
We're, we're giving them recommendations. They're gonna sense what the council may want. They're gonna bring back, bring this back. Obviously, we're not approving anything tonight.
I, I agree with Councilman Claire.
I'm diverse, too.
Well, I'm gonna say, no, I think it should be cut.
Mayor, I gave you chocolate.
I know, I'm, I'm out.
Looking at our two new positions, I won't beat this dead horse, this new plan engineer. You guys did approve that at the March nineteenth meeting. And this is just to help planning and engineering, stay above water with all these big projects that we have coming up. That does have a cost of about a hundred and thirteen thousand with salary and benefits. This would be a new position to the city, one that the city has not had prior, a communications director. So the communications director would do a number of things. I have a few bullet points up here, but. Just to really improve stakeholder engagement, they would be responsible for media relations, have a direct relationship with media. So when we have articles in the newspaper, that person is on top of it to make sure that those articles are accurate. They would be responsible for news releases, emergency and crisis communication, planning and response. Also employee communications, social media, just be that person out in the community to build those community partnerships and branding, et cetera. An ideal candidate, because we do want a professional level person that has experience in communications. So we'd expect them to have a degree and prefer experiment, experience in government. I think the whole idea is to be more proactive in our communications rather than reactive and trying to solve, you know. When, when it goes out on, you know, social media with just the public and they don't have the correct information, we're trying to put fires out later. So this person would be, you know, out in front telling our story before somebody else gets the opportunity to. That total position cost with salary benefits and a little operating, the new cost would be about a hundred and fifty thousand.
I love this idea. Sorry.
I echo your sentiments, and this is actually something that I would really encourage us to think about. I think that this is, does nothing but add value to our city. We're kind of like this little gem in the West Valley is what I've heard, like we're a gem and our cities are growing around us. We don't need to grow like a ten-person team like Goodyear has, but I think we do need to grow and we need to be able to accommodate those things. I think that this position will engender a lot of public trust, transparency and communications, have one unified voice. And it'll also take, I think, the burden off of staff of having, you know, our city manager having to address something, somebody else is doing something, we have one unified voice. And I can actually speak to a couple of instances where I think a position like this would have been of important benefit to us. The first one is when we did this historic thing, we elected a board of freeholders, we became a charter city. That was a big deal. That's what I, I was like, we're doing this, this is great. And then there was a social media post that I printed off last year, and I brought this to our city manager last year. And this was what it looked like. It had seventy-three likes. So there's not a whole lot of community engagement here and capitalization on this amazing thing that we did. That, I mean, Andrew and I and Lisa and, you know, other people who are not here, we spent a lot of time doing this and it was really an important thing. And that's not, there's in no way meant to compare, but like another post on some historic stuff got ninety-one likes. So I feel like that was a huge missed opportunity. And then as far as emergency communications go. We had a helicopter circling our neighborhoods not that long ago. Who's communicating with our constituents who are asking about this? We're not. They're going to the local. Message boards to say, hey, does anyone know what's happening? I hear police. So that's another example.
No one in the city government knew what was going on. So if we as, you know, a communications officer, we have no, nothing.
The communications officer is monitoring these things. They're setting up alerts for these things. Anytime something is happening with police. That's part of their job. One of the things that this job is not is just to like make a social media post. I think that that's a common misconception of what a communications director does. Oftentimes, they're the most underrated person at the table with the largest responsibility because they are in charge of communicating internally within the city. You know, externally communicating, they're like the face of the city. So I think it's a really important. And they can assist us with a strategy of how we want to communicate on the library, on the Hilltop, on Litchfield Square. All of those things. And they're able to engage with other organizations in the community as well.
And Suzanne, you touched on, just briefly, all of the important things coming up, but they also get in front of the negative stuff. The big problem about the helicopters circling around is the rumors. And so if we have someone from the city that says, we're investigating, trying to find out what it is, well, then the rumor that, you know, floating around is probably debunked. And as soon as we know, we put out the truth. Same thing with the Hilltop stuff. A lot of opposition that's gonna come out can be dealt with head-on in these kind of communications. So I second your thoughts.
Yes. I have one more thing that I wish to contribute to this conversation. I feel like a lot of the sentiments were that this doesn't need to be a full-time position or that there should only be a con, this should be a contracted position. But I would just suggest that we have a dynamic, changing environment that we're managing. And so we need somebody full-time kind of at the helm, being able to manage all of that. And I think it's disingenuous for us to just rely on staff to kind of ad hoc do stuff when we want to. Engender public trust with us, with transparency and accountability and all of those things. So I think a communications director would really be an asset to our city and help us remain the gem of the West Valley.
Other comments? This is, yes, Mr. Vice, too.
If we put this in the budget, do you still come back to us before we decide whether to do this or not?
Yes, we can't decide anything on this. This, tonight particularly is just for information.
No, I know that, but if we put it in, we do put it in the adopted budget, does that give you the, the permission to go out and do it?
Yes, sir, no, if, if it's in the budget.
Well, it's only, it's only gives you the permission to do it is, is when you bring us the sheet of approved positions within the city.
Employee roster.
Budget, yeah, the budget itself does not give you authority to hire. We have to approve the position, so.
And we, and that's part of the, of the budget process. When we approve the budget, we generally put that in as well that shows the positions. That is true.
Second is, what does the city line cost us? And is there a savings here somehow from that that could be applied to this or?
No, sir, not really. And we do city line all electronically now through CANDA. Existing staff make city line now. To be honest, I think, can't, I think city line could be done better by a communications person. That's nothing against our current staff that's doing it, but I do think it could be better than it is. But there's really no cost to it now, other than staff time, staff that's working on it. We print off a few copies for people that request a hard copy, but they're almost all electronic, sir. We used to spend like twelve grand a year printing them off, but that's been several years.
And in your budget tonight, I presume there's a city line, line on the budget?
It's such a small amount. It's just a little subscription to MailChimp that's a hundred bucks. It's in the community services.
Well, as I mentioned, I, I never see it because what was mailed, it was something that went and I read every word in it. Now that it's being emailed, it gets globbed up in the middle of thousands of other emails that seem to come out. And newsletters from every entity around, even though I try and pull it out to read it. I, I wonder if one of our problems is that we're not getting the information out to citizens because they're not seeing the city line either. Whereas when it was mailed, every one of them, it, it got, it was much better odds of it being seen.
Yes, sir. I, I, I will say, I, I think there's a, a certain demographic of community that would enjoy a hard copy. Yes, sir.
And then there's also a demographic that gets the hard copy and throws it away.
That's right, that's right. That's why, that's, that's the contrast. Well, so that's, that's the contrast is that Councilman Watson just said, like, I use my wife as an example. When, when we got, when she got the postcard in the mail about the Sharet meeting, she threw it away. Didn't, didn't think twice about it, just never, just, just threw it away. I didn't even see it. She said, postcard came to the city day and it got thrown away. Because she, we, she sees everything electronically versus seeing hard copies. So I, I think it again, just depends on demographic.
But, but piggybacking on what Suzanne said, I mean, if we have a communications director, they're gonna be able to, to all encompass it, put it on social media, put on the, hey, city line's coming out, you can see it here. Do this, so it's a more comprehensive message getting out all at once instead of just an email showing up in your junk box.
I think it could be very much improved, sir.
And I, and I don't disagree with your thoughts. I, my only concern was whether there's, whether it's a full-time job, once it gets up. And I, and I don't disagree with your thoughts. I, my only concern was whether there's, whether it's a full-time job once it gets up and running. It's gonna be, there's gonna be a heavy lift to get it started, but uh, you know, once it gets into a more maintenance kind of role where they're, they've got their tasks figured out and planned and I just don't know how many hours of, you know, a month there is, so.
I think that you will, if we move forward with this, which I highly encourage and recommend, um, I've part of what I did in FBI was I was a backup public affairs officer. They wanted to have a special agent trained in case our um, public affairs officer was not able to comment on something and they wanted to have an agent who was able to do that. And so I took all of the training and there is so much more that communications directors can do, like even out engaging with the community. I, so I think that like, yes, there will be a, a bit of a lift in the beginning and hopefully we're kind of working through some of that right now. Um, but I think you will be actually very surprised at how busy that position will be ongoing. And then also I just wanted to say with the city line, um, I appreciate the city line, but the information, once it's already been received, is outdated and it's not timely anymore. So I think that is a hurdle to overcome with the city line. In some cases, because I think it's quarterly and like some of the information has already occurred by the time we get it. So I just wanted to suggest that as well. Similarly, information is important.
I apologize. Um, so even, most of you will know Shelley Hornbeck. Shelley's been doing evaluation for us for a while now of basically of our media communications, of how we do things for our social media, press release, et cetera. And is working on that to show us where our deficiencies are. And then we'll back soon, I do think there's things that we can certainly improve on, we could be, we'd be led to show you what are findings.
So this way, you have this in your draft budget, correct?
I do.
Yeah, so I think, again, I think you've got a sense of what the council's looking at and we're, we're gonna need to, we'll have to bring it back and try to understand, uh, when we look at the, at the chart, how we're gonna, what we're gonna exactly authorize within, in terms of the position.
What does that mean?
What's that?
I don't know what you just said.
It says that, I'm saying that we're gonna move along, that this position, we're not gonna approve it tonight.
I understand that.
And that we've got our feelings about it, I think, expressed to the, to staff. It's in the budget, so the next step will be when we look at a chart of who the authorized positions are.
Okay.
Which is part of the budget process later.
Sounds good.
Thank you. So if we move forward with um, what we presented, our authorized full-time positions, it would drop just slightly. Even though we're proposing to add two, we did reduce one. And we did have an internal change where we reduced specially this events assistant from one to point five, but that just worked out because of a existing part-time HR staff. She's doing a dual role and it's working out great so far. So FTE count was nearly flat. This is just to take a look at where, uh, we're at on the employer medical coverage compared to the other West Valley cities. And this was, if you look down at the bottom, that's where, I'm sorry, this is kind of a jumbled up spreadsheet, but you can see we're anywhere from ninety-three to ninety-eight percent coverage. Then if you look at some of the other cities, I would say there's a low of eighty-three and then it's a high of up to a hundred percent even for family coverage. I would say overall, um, we're within range of what the other cities um, cover. I did want to point out Goodyear, some of their plans, they only cover eighty-three percent, but they provide an onsite medical center for their employees that's free of charge.
Free of charge.
Goodyear. Are there any questions on this? So another um, benefit that we have for employees are our paid holidays. So just comparing this to everybody else, if winter closure is approved, it would be sixteen or seventeen days, depending on when Christmas falls. And you can see there's a low of, of ten and a high of eighteen. So depending on if we have winter closure or not, we either are at thirteen or sixteen, seventeen. So we are a little bit on that higher end, closer to Tolleson and Youngtown.
What are the, the, the difference, say, uh, between Goodyear and us? They have eleven observed holidays, most are ten or eleven, and we have thirteen. What are the two different holidays?
They do eleven holidays, then they give them a floating holiday and then three flexible holidays. So they get fifteen total.
Are we counting that, that winter week as a four or five day period? Okay, so that, okay, that makes sense now.
Any other questions on our, um, paid holidays? So moving on to our operating budget. Um, looking at ongoing revenues to cover our ongoing operations. Um, I'm recommending a budget of just over sixteen million. Um, the majority of that would be our local sales tax. I'm recommending we budget eleven million, which is flat from our this year's um, projections. You know, we've seen tremendous growth, about ninety percent since two thousand and eighteen. And I think we're, we're at our peak and we're, we're on cruise minimal right now until we start seeing activity in Litchfield Square. Um, our second biggest pot of money is our state shared revenue. Those estimates did come out last week, so that's at two point eight. So that gives us a grand total of just over sixteen million. Um, I will point out the interest earnings, I have put in a recommended budget of eight hundred thousand. I think that's still on the conservative side. Uh, moving forward, I lowered that down to a hundred thousand. I just don't want us to get accustomed to needing, you know, eight hundred thousand to a million worth of interest earnings. Of course, we strive to get that, but just don't want it to be something that we rely on. Um, such a volatile reven- revenue source for us. Before I move on to expenses, are there any questions or recommend, recommendations?
What's the status of the grocery tax and would that, you know, be going away and is that reflected in this anywhere?
So there's, there was a striker amendment that came out to an MBD bill two weeks ago. And it would have eliminated the grocery tax entirely. Thankfully, that didn't, that didn't get a hearing, it wasn't, it's dead. So as of right now, we're okay. There is an HCR twenty twenty-one that will go to the voters. But it protects everybody, it keeps everybody whole as of right now. If he, a city ever wanted to increase it, it would require voter approval, which is great. It keeps us whole. So as of right now, we're okay, but you know, until they signee die, you never know what can happen. So keeping a close eye on that, but this assumes the grocery tax stays whole. If, if it did go away, it wouldn't go away immediately. We would react in next year's budget. So looking at our operating expenditures, um, total recommended is just under fourteen point three million. Our debt service for the twenty twenty-three bonds, you can see our debt service goes from one point four to one point seven. It's going up three hundred and ten thousand, but we had structured it that way. Um, just assuming we would have some, uh, activity in Litchfield Square. We're not quite there yet, but it's, it's right around the corner. And then the other increases I have, um, different slides for. So the jump in public works, in this, we've already started paying for this year, the four additional staff. But just opening that park is about a, uh, four hundred and fifty thousand dollar annual cost. And we also assume responsibility for the library utilities and maintenance, so that's a new cost of about twenty-eight thousand. And we've already discussed this, adding the plan engineer to help with these projects as an additional one thirteen.
Have we, have we actually added the staff yet or not?
No.
So how are we dealing with the park maintenance now without that staff?
Oh, the park maintenance, yes. They're on staff already. Sorry, I thought you were talking about the plan engineer.
Say it, say it again?
I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about the plan engineer. Are you talking about the?
No, no, I'm talking about just physically, I, you know, we obviously have a big new park that we have to take care of. So is the staff already here?
Yes.
Yes, sir, that is.
They're fully staffed. Um, um, public safety, we are um, recommending a full-time officer that will be dedicated to traffic enforcement to help with um, speeding issues that we have. Um, it would take Avondale until January to have somebody ready to go. And we would also need to order that um, officer a patrol vehicle, which we would need to do right like July first. It takes forever for those vehicles to get here. So that would have a cost of about eighty-six thousand in fiscal year twenty-six. And then obviously next year, when it's a full fiscal year for that officer, it'd be about a hundred and seventy. And then just that one-time capital cost for the vehicle, about a hundred and eight.
And that's in the budget?
Yes. Yes, all the numbers that I've shown, um, and the recommendations, all the recommended numbers are included in these.
In the fourteen million.
Um, city attorney increases for the Camelback truck study. Um, we are negotiating that, but we are um, asking to have that capacity. So we have what we need during those negotiations. Um, communications will be an additional one fifty. Um, moving on to rec and special events, um, rec is right at just over there fifty percent in the cost recovery.
Oh, good. Sorry, Vice Mayor, go ahead. Isn't your bargaining position much better on that attorney cost if we move something much lower? Put something higher in there and they see it, they know, they know where to go.
You put something lower, then you gotta, you gotta make sure we have a good size contingency.
Right, well, we do. Yeah, we, we'll, we'll do it every year. And every year we move stuff around and make it all.
Yeah, we just have to make sure there's capacity.
Right, as long as they're somewhere, sir, because we don't know what the file number's gonna be yet.
Yeah, I just.
But I see your point.
I struggle with how you're gonna negotiate when the numbers on the table.
I don't want to anti-ragging.
I said, no.
No, I can, I can lower it down and just have that in contingency.
When we actually prepare the budget instrument itself, lower way down, but put it in the contingent, but make sure the contingency is there so we have capacity.
That sounds good. Um, rec is, we're budgeting just to be over that fifty percent and special events just over ninety. So they're right where they need to be. They usually perform a little bit better, but we do watch this all year. So we are able to respond if necessary to make sure they hit this target.
Question? The revenues for special events, uh, what is, what's that gonna assist them?
Just, I'm, I'm sorry, I wish I knew this.
Space rental, uh, sales tax?
Oh, no, this isn't sales tax. This is just the money that the vendors pay to be.
Be here.
It, to be here, yes.
So there is a sales tax.
There is.
It's a different number, yes, sir.
Yeah, it's just included in that eleven million. Yeah, be factored in the sales tax.
The sales tax, yeah.
So to summarize our operating and personnel budget, our total revenues are just over sixteen million. Our personnel budget's just over six million. Operating is at six point five, our debt service of one point seven, bringing our total to fourteen point three. So our revenues over expenditures are one point seven million.
And that does not, that does not include construction sales tax, correct?
Correct. Yeah. Correct. Just be our ongoing for operations. So our fund balance estimate for fiscal year twenty-six would be.
And just a, a point for the council to understand, so one of the things we've talked about is taking our interest expense, interest income and allocating at least some portion of, if not all of it, at least some portion of it, making it uh, appear as a one-time revenue as opposed to an ongoing revenue. Because it is kind of one time, it's, it's dependent upon what happens with interest rate policy in the country, basically. And we, we don't want to get to the, depending on, on each year, it's more like construction sales tax. That's something you'll probably see in the future.
I think that would be wise. Moving on to the fund balance, um, projected for twenty-six is thirty-four point eight million. However, we restrict um, fifty percent of general fund operations, so that's about seven point one million. And we also have to account for the money that we will be spending on library and Camelback and what we've already dedicated to the hilltop. We've agreed that all of the construction sales tax from the Aguafria project of one point eight million goes right back into the hilltop. So the money available for other citywide capital projects is seventeen point eight million.
Question, Mr. Vice Mayor? I thought construction sales tax was not in our income, but you've got spending with construction sales tax in our expenses.
So it's, it is included in our fund balance calculation. Let me go back up. So this operating revenues, it's not included in there, but it is, it does roll up into our fund balance. So.
Okay. You're not seeing all the math behind this.
Yes, okay.
Another piece of information for the council. Where we, I've asked staff to, to figure out some dates that we could potentially have a retreat. Council retreat that would be in the back, you know, in the metro area, but not necessarily in Litchfield Park. Uh, and the topics would be things like this. We set this policy of fifty percent reserve at some point in a long time in the future. The council is pretty well turned over with the exception of Vice Mayor and I, so you're not, you don't even have, you never took part in the conversations about why we even have this, this fifty percent set aside. So this is one of the topics that I'd like to see us as a council spend some time. So that we make sure that these policies that I think are really key to the success of the city, that, that everybody in the council but understands them and has a chance to, to see if we want to change them at all, so we end up with a policy that everybody's bought into. So if anyone's wondering where the fifty percent came from, we're gonna spend some time, I want to spend time with council talking about.
Is that, that specific item, is that just a Litchfield or is that a state mandate?
No, no, it's just Litchfield. This is our council policy. It was, literally it was seven. I, I don't think, I think the seven, seven of, said it, you and I are the only ones that are left. Uh, I think so, yeah. So five of you don't have any idea where it came from or why it's there, and yet it's a really, really important policy to the city. So, sorry to interrupt.
No, that's good. Um, I just, um, a little background, I've been working on some fund balance policies to be prepared for this meeting. I've gathered some other cities' policies to look at and so anyways, we'll have, when we do that uh, meeting, I'll have some information, more information for you. So moving into our um, twenty-six capital improvement budget. So we take our construction sales tax, we consider as a one-time revenue. So I'm estimating that'll be about two point eight million. That does assume that parcels one, two, three, thirteen and fourteen are under construction. I think there's a really good shot that they, that they will be. Um, the one point eight million for Aguafria and then that, the money that we see, we, we receive from Miracle Bay County, um, the eight point five million. So moving to our VIP list, I did print this out. I think it would be easier for us to just look at it in paper. How broke these projects out into different categories? The first one being the road projects. They're all of the projects that we discussed at the work-study session in February, I believe. Mayor, um, did you want me, would you like me to go through each of these or how, how do you prefer we um, go over these projects?
I guess the, the best way to, is to try to get a, a sense from a. I guess the, the best way to, is to try to get a, a sense from the council how much detail they wanna do in terms of viewing these individual projects tonight. Uh, but before we do that, we need to also remember, I looked at this quickly, and I don't, I don't believe the parking garage is on this list.
It's not.
And the parking garage is, you know, if we, if we just look at it, a three hundred and fifty, you know, three hundred and fifty. Uh, spot parking garage, you're talking about ten million dollars, roughly. So right now, you have, uh, construction sales tax from three and four. In the, I mean, it's being carried forward, seventy nine. And one of the things that we have taught, talked to staff a lot is that if you look at the construction sales tax that comes from three and four and one, two. City Hall, Pioneer Project. That, all that construction sales tax and all of the money from the land sales and those three parcels. You're gonna end up with close to ten million dollars. And, and that means, you know, that, that ten million that we need for the parking garage may get generated that way. But we need to, we need to keep that in mind as we start looking at what we're gonna spend the seventeen million on. That in that seventeen million, you've got some construction sales tax from three and four that really needs to probably be allocated to the garage. And you've got the sale of land that's already happened for three and four, that money is built into our, to our. Excess, our surplus, so both of those amounts need to be thought of as coming out. It's, you know, earmarked for this parking garage, potentially. To you, and there are different ways we may decide to do it from a finance standpoint when it happens, but it should be thought about as being, you know. Restricted money in a way, so the seventeen million probably is more like fifteen million, I'm gonna guess. There's probably a couple million dollars in there that really needs to be allocated to a project that's not on this list. But as a project that is, is gonna become a must-do as we build out all the different parcels.
So did you just say that the construction sales tax for Litchfield Square should remain kind of earmarked for a potential parking garage? Is that what your feeling was?
I believe we do that, yes.
I understand.
I don't know that when, when it comes time to build this parking. Some, uh, combination of bond financing and cash. Because we've found that works well in terms of maintaining a really healthy fund balance. But as you think about these projects, uh, you have to, you have to factor in the fact that we are gonna have to, we're gonna have to build a parking garage. And the source of, the source of funding for the parking garage has been kicked around, there's different sources. One of is, is when we sell, when we actually energize the CFD. And we get the CFD to the point where it can, it can pay for its portion of the infrastructure, which is fifteen million roughly. That fifteen million will pay for a parking garage easily, but we can't, we can't use that fifteen million for that. Because if we wait until all the projects are developed and they're all, all these businesses are working and all, all the parcels, which is when we're gonna do the CFD. We're gonna be out of parking so much earlier than, I mean, I don't know where these people will go, so, I mean, it's, we're gonna have to finance this parking garage. Some way before all the buildings are built.
Yeah, that's another question, thank you. So if that is the case. The construction sales tax for Aguafria would go to benefit the Hilltop, but then the construction sales tax for Litchfield Square would not. So how do we achieve our goals up at the Hilltop to revitalize the area surrounding the house?
We, we have a surplus, so, uh. We can, I think if we're judicious about how we spend this surplus, we can fund what we need to fund at the Hilltop. But still end up with enough restricted surplus that we will have money that can go towards getting this park garage accomplished or built when needed.
Okay.
It's just, it's, it's kind of, just I'm saying cautious, because we have, we have a significant surplus. But we, you know, we can't just say, yes, 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 yes. It, it, it has to be a bit of restraint, because we have to make sure that we are, you know, that we. Maintain enough surplus that we are able to deal with the issue of the parking garage when it comes up.
Certainly, I could not agree more that fiscal responsibility and accountability is very important.
So I, I would just ask staff in the future, when, in this list, that you put the parking garage in here. And because it, you know, it's a significant project that is part of our capital and is coming in the future.
Even though we might be five years away from even figuring out, you know, I mean, because three buildings get up, we. We park people in the dirt, but.
Yeah, the three buildings are a problem, problem comes when, when we approve, uh, four and five.
Right, right.
And who knows how long that will take, you know, I don't think it's five years, I think once we get three up, unless the economy goes to shit. Once we get the first three going, if it's, if they're successful, which I believe they will be, that, that the other three or four lots that we have are gonna become. In, you know, in, there's gonna be a demand for them.
For sure, and what's the, uh, from start to finish, from time of conception to drawing up plans and proof, I mean, how. Two years from the time we start talking about it to the time it's actually built. Okay, so, so we're in a good spot.
Yeah, we're in a good spot.
Just don't let, don't let it leave the back of your head.
Right, I'm just saying, remember that, remember that parking garage, because it's, you know, it's there and it's a, it's a big cost. So we gotta make sure that we've got provision for it.
So as we're thinking about it, though, you're thinking fiscal year twenty seven, twenty eight is where we really need to start dialing that in.
I would guess, I mean, literally, the time to build the garage is about the same as the time to build the, you know, the buildings. So if, once we get, you know, I think we might a little bit more with the fourth question going on. By the time that fifth building starts, we gotta be ready to pull the turn on this garage. Maybe an expanded garage. Okay, sorry.
No problem, I'll, I will add that back in. If we just looked at the projects by category, our total road projects this year were estimating four point seven. A couple of those we have to have completed by August twenty six, that's in the agreement with Aguafria. So the Brenton Roundabout and the Litchfield Road Underpass, which is three point two million, I guess the, is the underpass in the agreement, no. We would just like to have it done.
Something on Missouri Signal.
Uh, on the Missouri Signal, so part of that is in Glendale or McDot jurisdiction, have they agreed to participate in any way?
Sir, um, it's actually not in McDot, the McDot right away is really weird, it comes pretty close to, if it doesn't touch it. So half that light is ours, half of it is Glendale's. But it's also in the Sun Health DA, they have to pay for half that intersection based on the, based on the speed of their development. Okay, so that might not be years from now, so we may end up building ourselves and just sending them a bill that one day they will pay, it might be ten years from now, one day they will pay. Um, I am trying to swing a deal with Glendale now for us to take that section of Litchfield Road all the way up to the northern boundary of the Sun Health property. In exchange for moving their strip annex from the shopping centers at Dicer and Camelback. I think that's a good deal if we can make it work, because the thing, development that's coming. But we do need to go and build the signal because it's pretty close to warranting today, and when you open Aguafria, it will warrant it. Um, that being said, we have had discussions about this, that Aguafria is gonna put half a million dollars in there, not this budget, but the next one out of what they call, um. Their adjacent ways budget, to put half a million toward the Missouri Signal, sir. Sorry if that's a complicated answer.
So does this total one million reflect the total cost of the project or our total contribution?
One million is to build the signal, sir, the total cost to build.
And where's the, we just maybe only get some money, you know, some cash from other sources that we're not counting on in this budget.
Interesting, where's the right turn lane on Dicer? Shouldn't that be in next year's as well, fiscal year twenty six? The right turn lane on, I mean, on Camelback to Dicer.
Oh, it's down in the recommended projects.
Well, that's okay.
Good point, though, maybe it should go up to the road project.
Then eastbound? Yeah, the eastbound, right.
Southbound on the desert. We're planning to build this for the same time we build the wall, because you already have the crew out there anyway. That's been planned for a while, or these road projects are ones we discussed a couple council meetings ago, for, for growth. So that's why it's separated out, but it is a road project also, it's just been planned for differently. He's talking about the right-hand turn lane on to Dicer at Camelback Park.
I was talking about the right.
Off the Camelback, hand to Dicer, that's clear.
Is it under, is it in tight, including or under wall reconstruction?
Nineteen.
Yeah. Is it included in that? Or is it a separate one that they're doing together?
No, I don't know what that. I think that's congestion at Litchfield Road and Camelback, so I don't, I don't know that we have that.
I think it's in the Camelback wall one, but let's, let's make sure which one that's in, because we've been planning that for some time, but let's see which one of these monies that's included in.
Yeah, that's, I mean, I think we've been.
Yeah, this makes sense.
Very far, we live by, you know, I know that's something that makes, makes total sense, if we're gonna start doing that wall, that's.
Build it at the same time.
Right line, yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Under the, maybe it's, maybe it's under the required the view fence construction right there, or is that just the?
It very well could be in that number one, yes.
Any other questions? Again, all of these projects will come back to the council on individual basis for, for authorization. So even though we're budgeting for CIP, a CIP program. None of the money is committed until we look at a particular project that offlines.
One more on the recommended versus required, uh, so relocation of Scout Lodge is currently on the recommended. Isn't that a required project, given the timeline for parcels and, you know, parking garage and everything else?
Yes, we're actually gonna try to move Scout Lodge this fiscal year.
Okay.
It needs to go ahead and move. So we're working on those designs now.
So it would be a required as opposed to recommended?
Yes, we'd like to go and get it done this year if we, if we can.
It's an FY twenty five project.
Okay, good question. Um, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I'd like to focus on a few certain projects, if that's okay. Um, looking at these, this page was saying, the first section obviously is the road projects that we talked about recently as far as road infrastructure projects. Then getting into committed ones, I would like to bring your attention to that first one there, committed projects, Hilltop Restoration Phase One. You see, we have three point six million dollars for that, that is a big number. Um, as the mayor said, per the DA, we've pledged the money that Aguafria is gonna pay construction sales tax toward that cost, but that's only about one point eight. The reason why we're calling this three point six is for one point eight, you'll get your utilities done, you'll get some of the desert scape done, you'll get some of the greenscape done. But for one point eight, you don't get a bathroom, you don't get the ban stand, you don't get it back in good usable condition. I think you've gotta take it to a certain level, if you're doing the library, if you're doing Aguafria, you need to make the hilltop look good as well, I don't think it's finished for that number, right? I think certain amenities will be more in addition to that, but three point six gets it back in a good usable condition again. Again, between the ban stand, restrooms, grass, so on and so forth, it'll cost more than you think when you get into that. And we can show you that on various plans, but that's where that number comes from, I realize that's a big number to swallow, but that's, that's a lot to try and put into that. Like, for example, you see in that number Public Works yard, that's not for our new public works building, that's for a small public work yard at the Hilltop, so we're not taking equipment back and forth every day to maintain that hilltop. It would make sense to keep some equipment up there, because that's gonna be constant maintenance, because of the size of it, things like that.
There's, you know, there, there, just so you know, there's a little tension about how we schedule this and what fiscal year it comes into and. You know, Public Works yard is, is a relatively small amount of its cost, so that was, that was something that we for sure need to get it planned in, so that we have. Stuff there to maintain the grass and things that we're gonna be putting in for sure.
Right.
Ban stand re- restoration, the ban stand's gonna come down, so we might tear it down in one year, but we may not reconstruct it for another, a year or two down the road after that. Same thing with the, the, uh, verandas or those. The Ramadas that are, that are there, not Ramadas, what am I looking for? The, you know, the areas that have got, supposed to have grass on, they're like a little park. Those terraces might, you know, we might do something to one of them and not the other one, so the, the three point six million is. I think there's flexibility in terms of how we actually program it. It, it probably is gonna have to happen over the next few years, but not necessarily three point six million of it in fiscal year twenty five. Twenty six.
Thank you, sir.
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
The IT equipment and software, we've got that spread out over the next five, six years. We've talked about maybe some additional accounting software, is that in this first year, or when are you looking for that?
It's in the recommended projects, number nine, um, I do have it in twenty six. At the very bottom of the first page.
Okay.
Um, we did do a demo with one system, or one company, and we do have two more scheduled, two more demos scheduled. Um, our, our finance system is just, it's old, it's outdated, they're not updating it. Um, for example, the last week that the budgets were due from departments, the system broke. And so we had to quickly put some Excel spreadsheets together, so departments could do their budgets and their answer was. Sorry, we don't know, we don't know when it'll be fixed, so it's just, you know, they've dominated the small city market for years, so they've never had a reason to. Improve and, because a lot of the big companies, they won't even talk to small cities, because we're just small potatoes to them. But some of the bigger companies like Oracle are moving into the smaller city space, giving them competition, which is good, but. I, I just don't see that they'll, I just don't see them coming up to date, so is our system working, yes, but it. It's like working in a system from the nineties, like it doesn't have the banking integration, it doesn't have the AI that just. You can email an invoice and it puts it in the system for you, you know, it's just very efficient. Which would allow staff to work on other things that, issues that we have, such as keeping on top of the sales tax. Issue, being surrounded by other cities that have the same zip code as us, and things like that.
So you have it in, if you have it in this, this CIP budget.
I do have it in there.
That's, yeah, hundred and twenty five covers that.
The implementation, I did get a final number back from them finally, and it's about one eighteen on the low side. So I think one twenty five would cover that, if we went with this one in particular.
Okay. I think there's only one question that, that jumps out to me, and just as a council, we need to consider is, as you look, and I know we're not here to. Approve any sort of recommended projects, that's, that comes further down the road, but really, other than. Putting in the right-hand turn lane in Camelback Park, we're not doing anything to Camelback Road, which means we're not doing anything. To address the truck problem on Camelback, we're pushing that, we're kicking that can down the road another year. Because we got, we got ducks in the, in Ducks on the Pond with the, uh, I've been around you too long, around with the, with the Hilltop. My, you know, my biggest concern is it's like, you know, I look at, like I said, just. That was that kid, I'm looking at like two million on a public works facility construction that we have hypothetically slated for next year, and I would say. Boy, could a, could a, could a roundabout on Camelback at Villanueva or a stoplight. Somewhere, just something that's gonna, any sort of construction that affects the east-west, west flow of Camelback Road, I believe Councilman Claire agrees with me. Will send trucks a different route.
Yeah, if we even went in and put water in the median, so we could plant those dead medians, that, I think that would mitigate a lot of traffic in there as well. Just something to be able to cause some restricted flow of traffic.
And it just, Litchfield Road, I, I'm driving it five days a week now, and it just, as you come up, um, and you get right to the, you know, DUI catch a roundabout there. I mean, you, you could, the traffic is noticeably less now, you, you can see that people, if they wanna go fast, they're not going up, up Litchfield Road. They're probably going up Dicer now, and so, and I just, I feel that way with Camelback, I feel like the second that we, you know. Do some form of construction and whatever, and I know that there's a flow to the way that all these road projects work.
You've got, you've got money in here to do, you know, the roundabout and significant changes to the, uh, to Camelback to the west of Litchfield Road. And that's in, that's in twenty six, the question is then.
Is it?
Yeah, it's, it's number.
That's next year, yeah, I'm talking twenty five or twenty six.
Number, number one.
It's, it's number four, sir.
Oh, the, oh, the round, oh, the roundabout, okay.
There it is.
There that one, okay, so that handles the west flow.
That's great, sir.
Okay.
That's west of Litchfield Road.
The Villanueva one, sir, is in FY twenty seven. Um, you, you got a good point, so that's something that staff has discussed, I mean, if, if you really, if council really wanted to. We could bid this whole thing out as, as this one huge project, they have one contractor coming in and build all these intersections, you could do. we could bid this whole thing out as, as this one huge project. They have one contractor coming in and build all these intersections, you could do it. I mean, obviously it's gonna be to council, if you guys wanna bond, what percentage of bond, what percentage of savings, and Paige will get into that, you could do all that. Now, I don't think staff could handle that much engineering at one time with the staff that we have, cause there's so much engineer that would go into that many intersections. But, so we did private contracts for that out. But you could, you could have a master, you could have a developer coming and build all that. But I think you'd also have to ask just how much of a headache you want like traffic wise? If you, if you wanna tear up Litchfield and Camelback at the same time, you could do it.
Yeah.
But do you want to?
You better have that public information officer on board.
I agree with Justin. I, I would rather see us get it all. I think there's a savings, if, if you look at the cost of time, sure, what we're talking about, you're probably talking about a seven percent savings over two years, just in getting it done on, on the front side. Plus you get the cost of economy of trying to do more than one at a time, should be able to get a better bid for the people mobilizing everything and making it happen. So if we're doing the, the right-hand turn in the wall, and we do Villanueva, and, and, you know, we're talking about three roads things happening right there on Camelback at one time, we should be able to get a savings getting all that work done within a, within a calendar year.
Yeah, yeah, I think you would. I think you'd obviously some economies of scale there. But it would, it would, it would be a lot. I mean, it can be done, but it would be a lot, I think, of, again, traffic, but, again, we can do it, if that's what council wants to do, we can find a way to do it.
I would think that, e- even if it's a full million five to, to do, uh, another roundabout. Or is that the number we said, a million five for another roundabout? If we're talking about a bond, it would make sense to me to put that in the bond.
Yeah.
To go ahead and, and get it budgeted out and get Keith and the team the help they need, so that engineering isn't a factor. And, and bite the bullet. And the other thing I like about that idea is, as, as we get these buildings and the square done, all the entrances to the park are gonna look bright. Everything coming into this city is gonna give us the feel of the city. You come down Camelback now, I mean, it just looks barren. I mean, it, it just looks like, where are we going? This does not look like the gem of the West Valley, when you drive down that and those medians have nothing, you know? So I just think it's a real opportunity to do it, and if we're talking about making a bond, I think it makes sense to, to go ahead and get it all done at once.
If, if that's what council wants to do, we can certainly do that. It would, it would definitely make an impression.
The only, I mean, I see your point, and I, uh, see the benefit in doing that, but we had a meeting, I mean, I guess we could do whatever we want, but we had a meeting with the public here in a public, I don't know, it wasn't a public input session, but like, where we talked about these capital improvement, and we told everyone like, or the staff told everyone like, this is what we're planning for fiscal year this, this is what we're planning for this, and this is, and it was like a three-year project, so I would be hesitant to just be like, whoo, let's do it all starting tomorrow, you know? Even though I understand where you're coming from, I would be hesitant to make such an.
I, I absolutely respect that thought, but that would be a, an, an issue that I feel like it'd sell fairly easily. And cost savings and efficiency and getting it all done at once. Might have a little pain at the bite right now, but down the road, we're not extending it out for three years worth of, of pain and time, and we're saving money doing it. So I think that's something with a good communication structure, we could get ahead of that.
We sell and we get problems, right, expedited projects, we always get problems. Might as well be delayed.
Correct.
So you need, you need to go back and, and look at, if we're gonna do all Camel, all Camelback Road at the same, within the same project, it's still not gonna get done in one year. I mean, that's gonna be a multi-year project. But it would start with making sure that we, we have to get all the engineering work done.
Right.
So we can bid it.
Right.
So that would be the thing to, you know, to get, we need to get going on engineering work now. Whether we end up deciding to break it into two or three projects, or build, or do it as one big project, the first step is to get the engineering done. And once we get that done, then we can go out for different bidding scenarios and see what the cost savings are, and what's a realistic timeline to do it. So that, I would say that, and that's something we can, with the consensus, we can direct staff to do that now.
Yes, yes, sir. I mean, and that's exactly, reiterating, hammering home your point is that exactly is. We, we can't afford to kick the ball. I mean, we, we can't with the hilltop at all, especially the roundabout, and we can't, we can't say, we can sit here and talk, but we gotta make a decision, and we gotta move forward, and we can't, every month that, that we, you know, or we already get used to having a meeting every two weeks for the next, uh, year straight, so.
And, and we, you're gonna probably see more meetings just because we got so many things going on, but the, the issue of the engineering work is already started, I mean, that's, that, that has already gotten, it's not like, we're not waiting to start it, that's our, we're already coming there. It's just a matter of, we, we would have to add, I think the only thing we would have to add in is some of the engineering work that, the engineering work for the, the, the Villanueva intersection. We'd have a significant amount of time to do it, so. That can be probably added into an engineering contractor effort we've already got going on.
But once the engineering work is done, we get the engineers' estimates what these projects are gonna cost. To that point, that's, we're, we're a long ways down the road to get that done, and we can look at interest rates at that time, look at our budget, see where the economy's at. There's a lot of variables in this, as to whether we can move it along at that point, and we'll know whether it's a good idea at that point, and, but we need to start moving in that direction.
Right, we just need to get, we need to go ahead and get the engineering work done on the, well, it's just the west part of the project on Camelback.
So if I'm hearing you right, you, I think we should have staff to see, uh, timeline one, is it, timeline wise, is it realistic? How much D and E can we get done designing engineering, and how much can we actually build in twenty-six? And then, of course, that would tell us how much budget capacity we need in twenty-six of these projects.
The, a contract doesn't care if it's our fiscal year or not our fiscal year.
Yes, sir.
Right, they're, they're gonna contract that cover all of Camelback, might be a, well, you know, multi-fiscal year contract.
Right.
It's still one contract, and you get the benefit of that one contract with one, you know, one construction company and one mobilization, uh, whatever, it's just that they're moving, you know, up and down the road.
Right.
So it's just, I think what, I think what you need to do is look at that as one project, Camelback as one project.
Sure.
So you get the engineering work done on all of it, so that we can look at bidding it. We can bid it literally in pieces, or we can bid it together and see what the difference is.
Oh, I agree.
Yeah, even if it stretches over two years, it doesn't, I mean.
Right, I'm just wondering how much money to put in each budget. I'm just wondering how much, how much money to put in each budget here.
I, I agree totally.
I would guess it's probably not different than what you've got, cause it's gonna take time. You gotta get all the engineering work done, and then you gotta get a bid, and then you gotta get the construction started, you're not, you can't build all of Camelback in one, in one year. You know, it could never get done in.
Right, you won't get it done in a year.
So you've already got it budgeted in two years, that's fine. Okay. It's just looking at, we wanna do it as, look at it as one project.
Right, right.
I agree, we do the D and E first, then we decide if we wanna bid it out as one money or as multiple projects.
Right.
Just so everyone's up to what, what the mayor was saying on designs. Um, currently, Colliers, that used to be Hilgar Wilson, has been designing the northern half of the Camelback Roundabout with Sun Health. Okay, and we're working with them on the southern half. And Colliers is also working on the, designing the Renton Roundabout, the Alga Free Roundabout, however you wanna call it. And hopefully we get to bring you guys a contract on that at April Council. So that's two roundabouts that are already being worked on there, okay? That doesn't include the Villanueva one. And also, of course, as you might imagine, the roundabout that Sun Health has been designing does not include all the traffic mitigation with things that we wanna put in. And that's, that's time and design and money. I'm not saying we shouldn't be aware of that. Um, if you don't mind, a couple of other things I'm here to point out. So we got behind on Litchfield Square billing this year because there was more money that didn't get paid the previous year that rolled into this year. And because of that, we've been sitting on several capital projects. So we're gonna try to knock several of those out in the next few months for the ones that reasonably can. Some of those you guys have already approved, but we can't spend the money till the things are actually here. For example, the playground shade structure, which is number eight under required projects, you guys approved that a long time ago. But if we ordered those today, they wouldn't get here till Ju- till July, so that's next fiscal year. See, though, they've already been approved, they're on next fiscal year for that reason, so I want you to understand that. If we could buy them today, we would. I'd like to go and buy them this year, but I can't till they get here, okay? Um, the Villanueva irrigation up, upgraded, we're gonna try to go and get that one done too in this fiscal year, cause, you know, we've been sitting on these projects until we can do them. So we're gonna knock out as many of these as we can in the next few months to get them off the list, or things that need to be done. It's just we had to sit and wait on Litchfield Square till we could do them. Um, Councilmember Fraser, if you don't mind, you'd mentioned Scout Lodge, sir?
Yes.
Where do you see that? I see about the garage, is that what you were asking about, number fifteen?
Twenty-seven, twenty page.
Yep, thank you.
Twenty-seven. See him the budget for next year.
Yeah, there it is, thank you. I was looking for that, didn't see it. So, so, we're, like I said, we're gonna try to do that one on this year, so obviously we need to address that, so thank you. I wouldn't see it, I wanna make sure I understood what you were talking about, sir.
Is, is that a move the existing building, or is that a?
That's move, sir, that is to move it. We're working now.
Moving Scout, you're, you're talking about moving the building again? Scout, Scout Lodge.
It's kinda round and round and round, and the last time I heard we worked.
Well, that's what I heard we worked.
We worked. But it seems to me that that is movable, it's concrete block of white.
We've been talking about movement for a while, so basically, we do have a quote movement. That they would saw it off the foundation, if we could have them move it before a new slab, set it on the new slab.
Yeah.
Obviously, I'm oversimplifying it.
Yeah.
Um, there's money in there too, to add on new restrooms, external restrooms for Scout Park, put a new roof on it, replace the heat and AC. I wanna say we're, we're paying about three hundred grand. Obviously, there is some risk that you, when you pick it up, it is an old building. We don't wanna see it crumble, we don't wanna see it crumble on the floor.
Yeah, nothing's, yeah, nothing's, everything is fixable. It's not gonna go in a trailer, it's gonna go in beams and.
Yes, that's correct.
They're gonna, beams gonna have wheels on it, rolling across the street.
Yeah, that's right.
From the back, put it in the front.
So hopefully we can get that done the next few months, cause that, that needs, that needs to go ahead and move, it's just gonna, take it off the list. I just want you to understand when we have capital projects, there are several things we're gonna try to knock out the next.
It'd be three hundred thousand dollars of revenue, not an expense.
There's a, there's actually a TV show that's on like A and E that they talk about big moving projects like that, where they move homes and things like that, and they actually pay people to come out and do that, because it's part of the TV process.
Okay.
So we need to hold it.
We need a communications director to get.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
You're about the C I R.
Okay, um, there's several other small projects you'll see on there looking ahead, some of those are smaller ones, some of them are.
That's really not a bad idea, because that's a, not like a story.
It is a story.
Probably get scouts to be engaged in it as well.
Yeah.
If you go to Boy Scouts or Scouting of America, or they're calling themselves now.
Hard to interrupt you, Matt.
No, 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 you're good.
Um, just to point out a few of the big ones. So, um, next year, we do have the parking garage design, or the garage at Scout Lodge. They have got back with us, and we do know now that we can design it in two long halves, to make it longer at the Scout Lodge site versus just one. So basically, two halves there and just extend it, extend it further west, but they got back with us today on that. Um, we would like to go and do the D and E next, or at least where it's done, it'd be nice to have the plans done and sitting on the shelf. It generally takes about six months to design a garage, and you wouldn't have to build it yet, but just have the plan sitting there waiting so their designs, when time comes, that's one less thing, right? Just have them done. A big one there is the public works facility construction, obviously that's the plan, is to actually build a new public works building. So it will be designed on this year, but to actually build it for next year, and that is something that's needed. Just hitting on a few of the bigger ones. Any particular CIP items you'd like to discuss?
Doesn't look like it.
Thank you.
What, can you tell me what is the play area, number, what is the play area, west side of tennis courts?
Yes, ma'am, that's a good question, thank you. So, we're actually working on that, that's an easy one. So if you're on the rec tennis courts, if you're actually playing tennis, there's a dirt area right here to your right-hand side looking west that's unused. So we'd like to put some small playground equipment there for our city preschool. Our preschool has no playground equipment there in that park, and if you put it there, it's already fenced in, so the kids can't run off, they're safe, they'd be sheltered. We think that would be a good place for that, and we're also looking to re-stripe the existing tennis courts, right, where they can also play pickleball. So it's a pretty easy addition. You just get the click clack.
Yes, Mr. Vice, thank you.
On our budget, I believe, that many years past was a right turn lane heading northbound Litchfield Road, turning onto Wigwam.
I, I'm trying to think of Camelback. Wigwam, Wigwam, yeah, no, there was one, there was.
There was one, yeah, we, we discussed that for years and years and years about doing that.
There did used to be one years ago, I remember, you're right.
Yeah, it's, I don't see it in here.
I think that, I, I think, I think the road in that area is probably Goodyear's Road.
That's right, it is. Litchfield, Litch.
Right next to the church is Goodyear's?
Yes, sir. Litchfield Road northbound, south of Wigwam, is Goodyear's. Litchfield, let me think about it, Litchfield Road, now I'm, I'm upset, I gotta, I gotta think which side has a curve, which side doesn't, I'm wrong. Southbound is Goodyear's, northbound is ours, so that side's ours. Cause the Goodyear side has a curve, ours doesn't.
Carvis, uh, is, is a very, there, there, you don't have to move the traffic lights, it doesn't appear to be anything in the way. It's slapping down asphalt, two or three car lengths long to make a right turn lane there. Um, it, it would be a great convenience all the turning of the park.
Well, you're like that along, sir.
Uh, I think it was on for, to be happening, uh, many years ago, so, um.
You're about to see it on next.
Sometime in the last fifteen years that was on there.
I remember it being, I remember it being on there.
It was on there.
Yeah, it was, I agree.
Yeah, okay.
We can, we can add that for next year, I don't know what, tell me what it would cost, but we'll find out. O- other CIPs that we're not thinking of, such as that one. Good time to add them. Um, Councilmember Claire was asking me before, that, many of you got the email about, um, safe crossings on Litchfield Road near the lake. There's some, obviously, the short-term answer is re-stripe, I think the long-term answer is to put a race speed table there. That's safer than a speed bump, and actually, race speed table, you know what a race speed table is? But like anything, you have to move a few drains, things, if you don't wanna create a flooding issue, we know what that looks like. So I think that's a better answer there is a race speed table. You could do a hawk, which is the light you push that makes a flashing light, I think that would be overkill, you don't have much traffic there, but I think there's, a race speed table would be a good idea. So we could add that one as well.
If we're talking about things that we'd like to add for future years, I definitely think we need to take a look at, at the rec center and, and, and come up with a comprehensive plan to redo the rec center and, and bring that into current timelines.
Yes, we certainly do that. Do you wanna see us budget money for actual work or money for a study to have it, to see what it needs?
Uh, I would, let me, just a suggestion, that the way we use the rec center is gonna be influenced by the way we use the library. And it probably would be better to do a space, you know, a space review plan that looked at both of those spaces together. Because the, the preschool that we have really shouldn't be in that rec building. So there's gonna definitely be space created, just if all we do is just get, move the preschool, so probably would make sense to do that project all at once.
I would agree. So do a study for possible rec use for both the, this building and the rec itself.
Right.
Certainly do that.
Okay, thank you.
Others? This, this is the fun part, guys, what other CIPs we're not thinking of.
I think everybody's thinking eight o'clock's coming, so.
Understood, thank you.
You put together a very good list.
Okay, next thing on your presentation.
Pay for all of these projects.
He knows, yeah, that's why I said, I thought it was one that you lost. Now we get the.
So to summarize, we, we just went over about twenty point three million in total projects for next fiscal year. Obviously, not, like the mayor said, nothing is committed to, these would all come back to council individually. Um, our funding sources, we do have about eleven point six million. If we do decide, or just be mindful of the Litchfield Square construction sales tax, just set that aside for a future garage that changes this number. Um, but that leaves us with about eight point seven million left to fund, can, assuming that we do all of those projects on that list. So we have a few options, um, for funding. We do have that seventeen point eight million in our unassigned fund balance. We could look at bonds, we could look at a combination, we could look at delaying. Um, I did ask our bond underwriter if he, what I told him is I feel that the city could reasonably, comfortably afford a six hundred thousand dollar debt payment. So he came back with twelve and a half million. Um, we could issue bonds for twelve point five million, in the first three years, we could structure the debt, so the payment is six hundred thousand. And then beginning in year four, it would go up to the full payment of eight, about eight forty. And by then, I'm very confident that we would have revenue in Litchfield Square that would help, that would cover that difference. Be a twenty-five year term, obviously, the revenues over expenses that I showed you earlier, one point seven would drop to one point one. This is the impact of our fund balance. So the red line is our total fund balance, but the green line is probably what's more important, because that's our unassigned balance. What's in between there is restricted. So under this scenario, our unassigned fund balance would never drop below six million dollars. So under this scenario, we could comfortably afford the payment and still have a good-sized, um, fund balance. So under this scenario, we could comfortably afford the payment and still have a good sized, um, fund balance.
This is, that's, that six million is discretionary fund balance. It doesn't include the fifty percent reserve number that we want to restrict, that is restricted under policy.
Correct. Um, this does assume some revenue activity in Litchfield Square. I start off very low at, at the beginning. Hundred and forty thousand up to six fifty in fiscal year thirty-one. I think that's a really conservative estimate, but I think right now it's still good to err on the more conservative side. We also have to keep our eye on our, um, state imposed expenditure limit. We start doing, um, capital improvement projects. Um, as we know, our debt payments are excludable from that limit. And any project paid for with bond proceeds is also excludable. So under this scenario, doing the twelve point five million in twenty-six would be about five point four million under our limit. The next year, about two point two, or we could split it out half, half, if we're doing a combination of cash and bonds. Um, I really think these are situations that we watch and we, we react as the, you know, during, when the time comes. Um, the other option he looked at, if we wanted to stay closer to that six hundred, six hundred thousand dollar debt payment is a ten million dollar bond. And at year four, the full payment would only go up fifty thousand to six, to six fifty. But the impact that it does have on our fund balance. So again, that green line is our unassigned. At that point, it would drop below five million. So we still have our, um, reserved of about seven point one, seven point two. But the discretionary above that would drop below five, which does get, um, a little low.
Paige, what interest rate was the wrong guy talking about?
About four.
And the, uh, pools paying more than five?
Where, it has come down a little bit. It's about four point eight right now. But, um, still earning more than what our, any money would cost us.
Paige, was there any early, was there ability to early repay and?
Yes, we can. Actually, we structured the bonds so they are callable, but the interest rate on them is like two and a half percent. So if we do pay down the existing bonds early, which we can, it's, you know, the money is so cheap. Might make more sense to invest it for, and if we did this new bond, we would do the same thing. We would structure it to where they're callable early without a penalty.
That's almost a no brainer, right?
Right.
Um, another option is just no bond and we look at all the projects on a case by case. Um, I just threw in just spending five million a year and just to see what that would look like. Now, as you can see, our, our fund balances. I think I put in the wrong chart, I apologize. It, it stays up and I, this is the same chart as the last one, I apologize. Um, our expenditure limit, um, spending five million a year, we'd still be well under our limit. It's if we were to spend, you know, about twelve mil- million of our own city cash without any bonds, we wouldn't, we would run into an expenditure limit issue. So our summary and recommendation, we have identified forty-one million in projects. That doesn't include the parking garage, so really that's about fifty-one million. We do have about eleven point six million of cash. Um, so we would recommend the twelve point five million in bonds. Um, we do feel we can comfortably handle that payment. And pay for the remainder of these projects with future construction sales tax, potential one-time grants. We are working on that. And we are looking at trying to get some grants for the pathways. So any, any grant funding that we can get, we will go after. And then the remainder with fund balance, this does allow our, um, fund balance to remain above six million. And again, tonight is not committing to anything, but if we do include this budget capacity in the budget for next fiscal year, it will allow you the opportunity to make those decisions throughout the year. Just remember, once we set that ceiling in May, then that's it. We can't go above that. Um, definitely no obligation to issue bonds, even if we do include it, it just, it gives you the option if you so choose to. And that is all I have on the general fund, just a few slides on our special revenue funds, but are there any questions, ma'am?
Uh, observation and a request that maybe we do this analysis just slightly differently.
Okay.
Um, so with the way that you presented these, uh, projects. You're working on, you're working on a bogey of eleven point four million dollars, basically, you need to raise somehow, which fits to your twelve point five million bond. The trouble is that there are projects that are twenty-seven, is listed as twenty-seven money that have to be done. With, you know, it, it's all together. It's not like we, can't think about some of these things as just one, one fiscal year because. You know, for example, we've got the roundabout, we're going to fund one point five million for the roundabout, but there's seven hundred thousand left over that's got to get, come from somewhere. Now you've shown in twenty-seven, so, so you don't take it into account in terms of, of what we've got here. The, the twelve point five isn't going to, isn't going to work for that. The twelve point, if the twelve point five is really the number we need to, you know, that are, the number that fits best our budget for a bond. Then we need to reorganize these, these so that they all come within the ability to fund both sides of it. You see, I mean, look at, you got Britain Roundabout, you got a million six and six hundred thousand, right? We're only covering a million six. And then say that Litchfield Road underpass, eight hundred, but then you got two hundred that has to also be spent. Do you understand what I'm saying?
That makes sense.
Yeah, so we've got to take these projects and reorganize them to see, really look at them not as, I mean, one, as, as fiscal year versus fiscal year. You got to look at it as one project and how you're going to, how are we going to, uh, deal with that? How are we going to pay for the whole, the whole thing?
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments, questions?
Just a general comment on bonds. Uh, I'm not, you know, opposed to putting in the capacity as written. I, I would be opposed to issuing new bonds until things go vertical in Litchfield Square. I feel like the city has committed a lot of money, borrowed a lot of money. We need, it's not under our control. We have projects that we have to do, but we have created something that is supposed to generate revenue and right now it's just a bunch of dirt. It's not our fault, um, but I, I am not necessarily comfortable taking on a six hundred thousand dollar debt payment. If that's not generating any revenue. So that's just a general comment. I know it's coming. Uh, I know that there's buildings that are going to be there. I believe in the project. But I don't necessarily believe in taking on new debt until there's revenue being generated.
And the, um, the, the need to take up a debt is not immediate. So I think the, the concept is that we, it's helpful for budget for it.
Yes.
And then a- as we get, you know, six months from now, literally seven months from now, we'll have to worry about potentially, you know, deciding, making that decision. Which we'll see if there's, we'll see. There could be two buildings started in six, seven months.
I'd love to see it.
Could be. Again, it, you know, it could be not. So the decision of whether we actually use bond financing, uh, is down the road.
Yep.
And I think it needs to be, it's going to be a little bit more sophisticated in terms of looking at all, you know, how do we complete these things? And some of it may have to come from our reserves, maybe not, I, I don't know. That's, I, I think, I think this, the analysis that you've got started is perfect, but now we're going to have to expand it a bit.
We, we generally budget for more than we're going to spend. Because we don't know what projects are going to come up. And if we don't budget, uh, a, a higher number, then we have a cap, we can't go above, then we got problems. And we've had that problem before. Uh, so, uh, building the bond into the budget doesn't bother me. But it's going to come back to us before we ever do it. Yeah. And if you want to see vertical before you vote yes, you're going to get that opportunity.
Yeah, and like I said, I'm not opposed to the, including it so that we have the flexibility. I would not be comfortable voting for it until there's progress.
Understand.
Thank you. Um, we can run through these really fast and we just have a few special revenue funds. Um, we'll start out with our HERF fund. The estimate this year is five hundred and twenty-three thousand. Uh, we do have, um, beginning fund balance of about a million, so we have, we'll have one point five million available. And we are going to recommend using about a million of that for one of the roundabouts. And we do.
Is that million in, in seventeen million?
No.
So, and that's what you're, you know, this analysis that you're going to need to do to expand is, needs to look at all those, all the source of funding and you need to include all that in there. I mean, and there's no reason, we don't have to keep five hundred thousand dollar balance in HERF. You need to, I would look at using one point five million dollars. Because we've got projects here that are, you know, they're going to go against that seventeen. And we don't want to do that if we don't have to, at least to extend not, not, it weren't required. So you need to, as you think through like a source of funding to do these projects that we have to do in the next two years. And maybe it's not going to be the total of whatever is here on this, this sheet, maybe it'll be a little bit less. Um, you need to use all those kinds of monies that we've got sitting, you know, from different sources where we can use them. Let's make sure we incorporate that into the analysis.
Um, yeah, definitely. And just the, the reason why I did, or suggested just a million is the other, just the road maintenance, leaving about a half a million just for the general road maintenance. Or then we would go into the general fund for it, so.
Again, I have to see what, what you, what you've already got in your budget.
Mm-hmm.
Is what's in the budget and how much of this HERF money is available. So we can spend as much as we can, we want to reduce this number down to a number we can deal with.
Okay.
We don't want, we had a problem in the past and I think Paige, you came in and fixed it. Uh, when you came, that we were getting HERF money in, it was being built up in a restricted account. We were spending general fund money on everything else to get building that account up, not spending this.
Yes, that's why we have quite a good balance.
Yeah, it's just suddenly we're like, what, what the heck? So, uh, I think if I correct or correct, if I'm wrong, what he's saying is that this should spin it down. If it goes to zero and stays, the HERF fund stays at zero, do we really care?
We really don't.
Yeah, because, yeah.
We want to make sure we, because this, this is, this next two years is a really big deal. It's a big nut. And so we, we, you know, we can't, if we can use a million and a half, we can use a million and a half. Then we need, then we need to reflect it in this analysis so that we're, the number we're dealing with is really the number that we've got to deal with, that we've got to worry about.
Understood. We do have some court funds that will be in our budget. This will be new. These funds have always been here, it's just they haven't been run through, um, the city's budget. So even though Avondale, um, will be running our court, um, city finance will still be, will handle, start handling all of the, um, court finances. So this account here, it's just a pass through account, two hundred and six, six thousand comes in and about two hundred and six will go out. Um, does not impact the general fund whatsoever. It's a completely separate fund.
Paige, can I, can we go back to that slide?
Mm-hmm.
The one before this?
The HERF one?
Yes. So if we, if I heard you correctly, five hundred thousand of this, of these funds, these revenues, go to maintaining our streets. So if we use all of the money in this fund for a project, then our general operating expenditures are going to go up by the five, that hundred thousand dollars that we are now paying for street maintenance out of the general fund. Is that kind of what I heard from you?
Correct, and depending on where we're at in the road maintenance cycle, and I'm, I'm sorry, I don't have the details. I would need to ask Keith where we're at in that, um, road maintenance cycle. But yes, it, it would, we either pay for road maintenance out of here or we pay it out of the general.
Okay, so by utilizing this entire fund on projects that we want here, we would then be absorbing other expenses by, with our general fund?
Yes, and there is a, a placeholder on the C I P sheet.
Justin Circle, number three.
Number three, yes. We do have three hundred thousand there. I keep that on there every year, just in case there isn't enough money in HERF to do the general maintenance.
Okay.
So the court enhancement fee, that's the fee that, um, council created, um, via ordinance. So we will still, um, collect that fee, it will still come to the city. It does generate about forty-five hundred dollars a year. Um, there is, it is in, um, our, our own rule that we won't let this fund drop below fifty thousand. That was a, a deal we had made with the court at the time. We don't have to keep that if we don't want. Um, we could spend it down, but just keep in mind, it does only generate about forty-five hundred a year. So if we use it for operations one year, that money will need to go back into the general fund the following year.
But.
So I, this is something I would support spending down.
Yes, this is something that makes sense to spend down.
Yeah.
To me, uh, and I, and I've struggled, and we're going to talk about this apparently, about whether we need to have a reserve for that or not. The reserve seems to be kind of a useless bookkeeping headache to me.
Yeah.
We would like to bring.
This? You talking about this?
Yes.
We would like to bring ordinance revision to council to remove that cap.
The only reason we have this is because our judge insisted on it. Why? I have no idea. We felt more comfortable having fifty thousand in the bank that we didn't, couldn't use.
And once we remove that cap, we could spend it down to zero and of course, pay for the Avondale I G A with these monies.
We'll bring that change and, um, I'll include in the budget just to spend a hundred percent of it and we can use it for operations if we like. This is another, um, court fund that, um, the city has. It does have to be approved by the state. It only generates about four hundred and fifty dollars a year, but it does have a decent size balance. How many years has it been generating? Never been touched.
This is also something that I would support exploring if we have to, if, what we can spend it on and absorbing, pass that way too.
I did have a meeting with Avondale's Finance. We do have another one coming up, but one thing that they asked is if they make a request to use their judicial court enhancement fund to the state, that we will also make that same request to pay for our share of whatever it is they need there. It's typically capital items that we use this money for.
Would it be two and a half percent if theirs?
Yeah, yeah, it'll be a small amount, but.
Um, one thing I would touch on, I don't want to hit too hard, that these funds have always existed. They've always been in our, in our court. It's just that, um, previously, previously they weren't, they weren't involved with the finance department, I'll say it that way. So the, the funds have always been there.
We, we went through it, it's about a huge amount of money bulletproofing that office at Sherwood. I mean, it was a bunch of money we spent on bulletproof glass, all kinds, walls are bulletproof, everything's bulletproof. But we didn't spend any of this money we could have. So we had our four hundred fifty dollars come in and we went from a hundred thousand to a thousand four fifty. I mean, it's just stupid.
Don't we have a cost recovery?
We can't even, we're going to, we're going to try to be more creative and figure out a way to have that benefit, to have the benefit of, you know, residences. Silly for it to be sitting in this restricted account.
And then there's one more, it's not quite as large, sixteen thousand and same, same deal if Avondale requests to use it, we, we would match, also send in the same request. The streetlight districts, um, we will need to assess a little bit more to cover for that deficit due to that, um, lawsuit. And the village at, um, Litchfield Park, it will be paid off, um, next year, actually.
But we're going to keep the assessment on your house.
I thought we had two or three years.
I looked at it today and there's, um, next fiscal year.
For you, it's going to go on from.
Everybody in the village, everybody in the village's property taxes are going to go down significantly.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Not, we've got two more fiscal years.
Just, just not your house.
Yeah.
Or any of the other lots.
For the mayor, except for.
Thanks for being able to live on this side of the fence. Six of you that live on this side of the fence and one lives on the other, yes.
That concludes my presentation.
All right, questions, questions for staff?
I'd just like to make a comment that, again, you're really well-prepared. And we appreciate your explanation and your preparedness.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Good job.
We got a question in the audience. It's out of the audience.
Did you fill out a request to speak for him? In your case, we will.
Since I am the representative of citizens of Academy, we, we, despite the current situation forward, we approve of, if you have our recommendations to.
Great. Thank you for your input. Thank you. Thank, thank the academy for it. Actually, it is important that residents know what we're talking about and you guys are obviously more informed and involved than many of our residents. So it's appreciated to know how you think about it.
I was there today and there's a great, great group of people. I came to watch and suddenly I became the program.
Okay, if there's nothing else, then we can end this and go to our special meeting. Yes?
I just, I just want to make sure I understand the actual budget that will come to you in May includes these same numbers.
Correct. And the only thing, only thing I'm saying is between now and then, we're going to get this a little bit more sophisticated to make sure that we understand that if we, if we, if we decide to go down this path with 12 and a half million dollar bond, that we, over the next two years, we're going to be able to fund the projects that are absolutely required off of this list, which may not be exactly this, not this list. Maybe you got in '27, you have another 14 and a half million dollars. So we're going to have to understand how to, you know, how's, how does, how the ones that have to go together go together.
Understood.
Okay, so I found out and after being mayor for I don't know how many years, that I can just adjourn the meeting. I don't need you to vote. We have nothing more to do, so we're for good.
That's in our council rules and procedures.
That's what I found out.